Hey, how are you guys?
You can hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have counselors on Zoom. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Let's see here. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call our city council meeting to order for this Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance, I guess, for those of us that are in the room.
I'm fine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a quick roll call. Counselor Myers, here. Counselor Lindner.
Here.
Counselor Ray.
Here.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Great, thank you. So we are to public comments period here. You have three minutes. Does anybody have a public comment they'd like to make? All you have to do is come up to the podium, tell us your name, and let us know what's on your mind. Going once. Going twice. Okay, three times, we're sold. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then. Can I get one of the counselors to read 2.1 on the agenda, please?
I'll go for it. No, I've done it before. You go for it.
I will attempt this. We did it already. Never mind. We were supposed to read it before we did that. Oops. Never mind. We're good.
I did so well.
We're good. 2.1's good. All right. For the Benton County Sheriff's Office's report, we have our deputy here. We get to see you so frequently now. So I'll have, we'll have you, Mark, we'll have you share the, the mic with him.
Evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Reports in the packet, guys.
So I've had opportunity to review it. Obviously, I'm Rick Savage with the Sheriff's Office. Thank you for having me today. Obviously, just want to tell you, as always, the sheriff knows about you guys and is mindful of the city and yeah, the Sheriff's Office is trying to do good work down here. So if you've noticed in that report, you're gonna see a slight increase in, I would say arrests. We've been doing some DUI patrols, spin speed patrols. Kind of a focus on that traffic enforcement that you guys have, you know, has long been a problem with the major highway going through the town. And other than that, the only thing that I can think of that may have some particular interest to the citizens of the city is obviously we had, what was a shooting that the car ended up at 99 and Lakeside?
Yeah.
You may or may not have read the, the public release on that, but basically, you know, that didn't have anything to do with Monroe or the Monroe area, there's people that were traveling through and sounds like a dating app encounter that led to a disagreement and a robbery and a shooting.
That's terrifying. My friend lives on Lakeside.
Yeah. Yeah, so our detectives were able to track down the people that were involved and everyone's gonna be held accountable for that one, so. And also, just the only thing I think of is the other night when we had those trees go down on, just on the Lane County side.
Yeah.
The power went out, several of us came down here just to make sure that nobody was messing around, so.
Right.
Anyways, other than that, appreciate you guys and thank you for having me here.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Any questions for Deputy Savage?
I do have a question. Was there some activity this morning downtown? I saw a sheriff's car blow down Orchard and then...
I'm not sure.
Okay, it seemed like they were on a mission.
You're catching me on my, my Monday.
Okay.
And yeah, I'm not sure if I can ask.
Okay, no, too big. We'll find out in the next report probably.
Or it'll be on social media.
Yeah, that's true.
As usually the case. Any other questions for Deputy Savage? No, something good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Have a good evening. All right, let's see here. And we'll give a brief city report. So with regard to engineer record. So talking with the attorney, this is actually all updates from the attorney. So she recommends that we actually execute a new, a new service contract for engineering services. We're not able to renew the old one. It had been expired for too long. So once we go ahead and execute that service contract, then we can go ahead and proceed with an RFP process. So that's her recommendation. She can help us with the RFP process if we need help on that. We may actually need help on, you know, drawing up the contract too, so. But it's in progress.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Would we have needed to do an RFP if we had stuck with the original engineer, knowing that that contract had expired? I'm just thinking about the cost associated with an RFP and having to go through that.
I don't think so, but I'm not 100% on that answer. So we'll go through the RFP process and we'll see who we end up with.
Typically, if you're careful on your contract and you put evergreen in it, then you can carry it over without having to go out for rebid.
Got it.
Yeah, unfortunately, probably didn't. I would assume. No, good questions. With regard to unpaid water bills, we have one in particular that's quite large and we'll actually discuss a little bit later tonight. The attorney is reviewing and researching that particular situation and she will get back to me and let me know how we're gonna handle it. So we are looking at, we have, we have a couple rather large ones, so we need to, they need to be addressed.
One account or, or multiple payments with the same?
No, this is two separate accounts that I'm thinking of. And then later on, we will talk about, and I have been talking with the attorney on this as well, about the building moratorium. So she would actually like to have me set up a meeting with herself, Chuck Schultz and Michael Bidwell, her planner. Might, we might rope Mark into it as well and discuss that, so. More to come on that. DEQ is back. They are requesting a TMDL matrix, I guess it's what it is, and they have kindly extended the deadline for us to June 30th. So I know Chuck was super excited, so he's gonna help us though. So we'll work on that and we'll get that in before the deadline. The franchise agreement with Charter Spectrum, I'll mention that a little later in the evening. With regard to 180 North 8th Street, that is a vacant property. The attorney is reviewing that. This is gonna be a rather complex issue because ownership is with someone who's been deceased for quite some time.
This is the Old White Farmhouse?
I, I think it's the one where somebody's been paying the taxes, think they own it.
On the west side of it?
Correct, yeah. Just right up the road here.
By Little Potopia?
No, just right up Main Street, North 8th, where Stephen Rose's building. And then you got the Walburg property that they're talking about, the, the spring coming from, coming from the Little Potopia property. There's a house right there that's falling down. But yes, correct, somebody paid the back taxes and thought that gave them ownership.
It's a lovely thought. More to come on that. I'll keep you guys posted on that as well. We had a over, actually, I think it started, Dawn, it started like Thursday or Friday, the, the city website. It was temporary, we were temporarily locked out of it.
That is correct, yeah.
So it came back up today, so we don't know exactly what happened. Don't know what's going on there. We are trying to finally get everything transitioned over. We have a copy of the current website, but it's an older copy. I'd like to get a newer copy and have the web developer get that onto the new website with the new host and then I can demo that for everybody, so we can take a look at it.
Are we engaging that gentleman, Stan?
No.
Okay.
No, he's our, he's our IT consultant. But we're, this is someone that Stan recommended. Yeah, I know what you mean. So more to come on the website. Made some progress, believe it or not, the night the power went out, I was talking with the web developer on text. I was able to get quite a bit done.
It's on your phone charge.
Yeah, it was, so I, I didn't have anything else better to do, apparently, so. So there's that. There was one other thing I wanted to mention. I can't think of it right now. We got plenty in the current agenda to go through, so we will just go ahead and keep moving, unless you guys have questions for me. Counselor Lindner's got all kinds of updates from the Finance and Personnel Committee. We'll talk about that later too, so. Anyway, we'll move on and we'll do the consent agenda next. That's 4.0 in the agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda, a motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate. So the minutes are here and the rest of the consent agenda is here as well. And Dawn's with us, so if we have any questions, certainly ask Dawn. And I want to thank Dawn for all of her efforts to document our meeting minutes.
Thank you, Dawn.
I know they're not what they were before, but I'm trying to be as accurate and put as much in there as I can.
They look good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Sorry, did I word that correctly?
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have an easy job. All right, any comments, questions, or anything in the consent agenda?
I can't get it to open on my side, so I'm gonna need to abstain.
Okay, understood.
Would it help in the future, just so if a counselor is online rather than in person, just maybe scanning and sending a copy to all the counselors? Would that be appropriate or you want it?
Yes. So normally what I end up doing, because, you know, we're, we're putting the packet together sometimes on Monday of, I will send counselors the agenda like on Thursday or Friday before. But yeah, if we could have a scan version, I think that'd be great to have. Nice to have the information before we sit down, so.
Yeah, and I didn't even think about that till tonight, so.
Yeah, that would be really appreciated on my end. I travel for work and I had an emergency and I'm in Toronto, so I'm three hours ahead and...
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna be bouncing after two hours today, I gotta, gotta tell you.
I bet, yeah. Okay, we'll try, we'll try to get through it quickly. We'll try. Okay. If there aren't any other comments or questions, are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I don't see any anomalies here.
Okay. All right, Counselor Ray. Yes, Counselor Lindner.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
And Counselor Cuthbertson.
I'm gonna abstain.
Yep, I just want to make sure we have that on the record. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to new business. So in the packet, we have, oh, it's a big part of the packet. Resolution 2025-23, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. I'm just gonna find it.
This is the biennial budget. It's actually, it's for the 2024 to 2026 date range. I don't know if the resolution says states that or not, but it is for that full period of time.
Let me double check. The resolution does, so the agenda, the agenda just needs to be corrected. The agenda should say fiscal year 2024 to 2026. The resolution is correct.
And the actual budget itself, in case anybody wants to review or ask questions, is at the back of the package, just because there was so much to it. So it's that last section there. There should be a cover page to kind of help separate it.
Oh, yeah, I just gotta keep going. There it is. Got it. Everybody else find it, okay?
Staple package is on the back.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Start from the other end.
Yeah, it's easier, less, less digging. We're getting way too much fun over there.
Are all the unappropriated ending fund balances, that just means stuff that. Needs to be distributed between different funds and is. They're therefore available, or what does that mean?
So we always have to have a, an unappropriated amount in there. I guess it's kind of like a hold on. And I'm not sure what the reasoning is there. I haven't read too much into it. Uh, but we always have to have an unappropriated amount, is my understanding.
Is that by a percentage?
I don't believe so, but I would have to look into that.
Thank you.
Their stand, the standard is like 25 or 50,000. Um, let me look at the unappropriate on here real quick. Yeah, we pretty much always have a contingency, operating contingency, and then the unappropriated ending balance. I'm not sure. If that, I'll need to check into it and ask Kathy as well. I don't know if that. Goes forward. Uh, for both of those, or if it's, yeah, a certain percentage. I don't believe it is though, because it's typically 50, 50 and. Or between 25 and 100,000, depending on what fund it is. But never less than that. So you mean something as large as our water fund. Um, doesn't have that much more re, like reserved than the, um. The smaller funds such as like Storm and things of that nature. So I don't believe it's a percentage. It might be a standardized amount.
Is it, um, maybe Kathy might be the right person to ask, but is it okay that we have a few different funds that have zero in it?
Uh, what's, so for example, which ones? Are they reserves or SDCs possibly, or?
Well, they're, they're, they're probably ones that don't really get used that often, but the Park SDC Fund FO or 507, I mean, a bunch of, they're all SDC funds, really.
Yes, I don't, I don't believe those ones are required to have that. Um, and they haven't been historically, uh, so I didn't really question it, but. Yeah, my understanding is it's just for like our main or core funds, we definitely have to have that amount in there. I think it's. I think what those, those amounts are is that. Um, if there's a contingency, so if, if there's like an emergency and we absolutely have to cover something, that's kind of there for like an, an emergency fund. I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The 508 fund, we have 117,000 in it, but the 508. Unappropriate is 287,000. So you're right, it's not a percentage.
Yeah, I just stuck with what we've had previous, what it was previously. Those didn't really need to change at all. I just wanted to make sure that. Um, like all the transfers in had to transfer out. Um, we had the appropriate amount in the funds to cover all of our. Uh, base expenses, things of that nature. So I just wanted to make sure we were in, in as good a shape as possible with what we have.
Any other questions on that? I know there's a lot here.
Yeah. And this is for a two-year period, right? Five, three, nine, five, eight, four, four, that big dollar amount.
Yeah, it was a sub overall for, that's correct.
About 5.4 million.
Yes, for the remainder of the biennial. So June 30th, 2026 is when this will be done.
Looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion whenever you guys.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution 2025 dash 23, the resolution adopting supplemental budget.
Can I get a second? Second. All right, any other comments, questions? Concerns, anything else you would like to ask? Well, we have Dawn here.
Okay, I do have a question.
Go for it.
Um, on general fund 100. And I know I'm going to get super confused with all the different fund numbers, um. Total Personnel Services, it looks like we have zero proposed, but I thought we were considering hiring temp. Is that, isn't that where that would get allocated?
So sorry, what, what line are you looking at?
Um, I'm looking at, let's see, it's. Line one on requirement summary, general fund 100. Um. Shoot.
Uh, yeah, right here. Personal service, or what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the back here. I don't know if anyone's just looking at the wrong spot.
What LB number does it have at the top here?
LB 30.
Okay, here we go. What line are you?
Oh, that's not, uh, sorry, that's, that's the amount not allocated. Um, so that would be any remaining amount. That's not something we've typically used. So, um, where we have our actual personnel services. Uh, budgeted out is on the first page of the requirements. Um, the total personnel services on, on line 15.
Right.
Yeah, I included a typo for the mayor, whether or not that's an appropriate spot for it, I do not know, but.
How did I see it now? Thank you. Cool. Um, I will, oh, you seconded.
Already on our first and our second. We were getting ready to, we were getting ready to vote.
Excellent.
I wanted to make sure all the questions got.
Perfect, thank you.
Not answered. Counselors, uh, Williams and Cuthbert, Cuthbertson, I can't say that tonight. Cuthbertson, you have any questions on the budget?
No, I just have a, a concern that I am not looking at the budget, so I don't feel comfortable voting.
Okay.
Are we able to vote if we've only got three people voting? Because two of them are abstaining.
Well, um. I'm not sure how that works. When we've got two that would might potentially abstain, if I have to end up voting. Not sure how that works.
Well, we can go through and vote it and then find out if it's legit or not. And if it's not, we'll have to.
Vote again.
Vote again.
So I got a quick question before we vote. Um, Dawn, do we have an electronic version of this at all?
Unfortunately, no, I didn't even think to provide an electronic version. Um, I didn't know that counselors wouldn't be there tonight, so I. Right, I guess we would have had knowledge ahead of time. I could have, you know, that I'm working from my laptop at home, so I have no access whatsoever.
Okay, no, that's fine. Nope, it's good information for next time. Go ahead.
A question, it, it, are there any changes since the last budget meeting that we were at?
Not to my knowledge.
There are no changes, no. It's, it's exactly the same. It's just that we have to go through council after we do. The budget hearing, um, where we have the public, you know, make comments or ask questions. So this is just to make it official, uh, and adopt it, but if not, um. We may have to have some sort of special, I think it has, absolutely has to be done by. June 30th or before, so.
Right.
Um, we'll just make sure we do it before then if it's not tonight.
I'm just asking because I was at the last budget meeting, so I'm comfortable if there haven't been any changes. Pat, since then, to go ahead and vote.
Oh, okay.
If that makes sense.
Gotcha, okay, yeah.
It does.
So we have a quorum.
Okay.
Once we vote.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and vote, and this is on resolution 2025 dash 23. Okay, so Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Linder.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Abstain.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next up is resolution 2025 dash 24, a resolution authorizing the return of funds. For water, storm water and sewer system infrastructure extension to the water, storm water and sewer SDC reserve funds. And that is in the packet as well.
And this was, um. One that I had ran across when returning the other SDC funds. Uh, we did chuck, check with DRC Schultz on these. Uh, he verified they were incorrectly used and need to be returned to the SDC reserve funds.
And the total amounts here, we've got sewer system repairs and maintenance, $25,000, it's going back. Storm repairs and maintenance, $10,000, going back to the storm SDC fund. Water system repairs and maintenance, that's $11,000 going back to the water SDC fund. Our counselors that don't have that, I hope that helps. Are you looking for the resolution?
I am.
We're just looking for resolutions. Please hold. Go ahead.
None of that was spent, correct? It's, you were just switching funds from where it got moved to back to where it came from.
That is correct, yes. And, and it won't need to be included in the budget either, because. This, A, it's a separate resolution and B, it wasn't, it's not a budgeted item, if that makes sense.
So fortunately, hasn't been spent and we're just moving it back into the appropriate funds.
Correct, yeah.
This is the same thing that we did for that other chunk of change, right?
Same thing. Dawn came across another one and we ran it by Chuck and he said. He's to go back.
I'll make a motion to.
Go ahead, sorry.
I just want to clarify, especially for people that aren't able to be there. So. When we do the budget, we do it based on all of our. Monies from all three accounts at the beginning of that budget cycle. That amount didn't change, so this wouldn't. Affect anything as far as our budget goes. I just want to reassure council of that.
Yeah, we're just moving money. Okay. Counselor Linder, you were gonna.
I was gonna make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025 dash 24.
Oh, 2025 dash 24.
Yeah, I probably missaid that, but.
That's okay.
Resolution returning funds for water, storm and sewer system infrastructure extension to the water, storm and sewer SDC reserve funds.
Okay, great, thank you. We'd like to second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions from the council on this? Unfortunately, this is kind of a repeat. Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay. Counselor Cuthbertson?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Linder?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray? Great, thank you. All right, moving on, guys, um. Resolution 2025 dash 25, resolution authorizing the sale of surplus city equipment. That resolution is also in your packet and it includes a couple of. Items that go along with it. One is the surplus property list, the city surplus property list. And then one is GovDeals, that'll be the site that. The online government surplus app auction site we'd be using. And just their general rules are included there if you are interested. Are we gonna put any reserves on them? I don't.
I can do my best to look up value and. See what they're at.
Yeah, you know, I was just saying to kind of protect us from somebody lowballing.
Yeah, I mean, there's the trucks, I mean, it'd be able to get.
Yeah, you gotta look at the website, make sure that if you have a reserve and it doesn't sell, that you don't have to pay a percentage on the reserve.
So, um, Counselor Ray, I did check into that.
Yep.
Um, so for, there is no, no fees for us at all. Um, and no listing fees. So the fees are actually charged to the bidders at 12 and a half percent of the ending auction amount. And it is an auction, so we can do the open bid amount at what we think it is worth at the minimum.
Okay, so they don't. Put a charge on if you have a reserve and don't sell?
That's not my understanding, no.
I just, I, I do a lot.
I can clarify that though, and, um, if we want, we can. Um, or we can hold off on it as well, but if you want to approve it. Um, with that, that contingency there, I guess. Um, just to reassure us that there is no fee, uh, if it doesn't sell within X amount of days, we could do that.
There is a section in the general rules here about reserve auctions. Just a small section.
Yeah, there is a time restricted on a payment due date, but.
Well, you don't want to wait forever for the payment.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a 40% charge on that one.
Ouch.
Yeah. Definitely want to pay quick. There's a couple of things that we should. If we can, definitely look at putting reserves on, like the Paladin Sweepster, that thing's pretty much brand new. It was just a waste of money when it was purchased. Um, a couple of other things, but.
There are 16 items for the counselors on Zoom. There are 16 items on the property surplus property list right now.
So we're gonna sell that big stove in there?
No, there's another one that used to be in here.
Oh, it's the old one.
Sitting in the.
Okay.
The Reader Building.
Well, there's the old refrigerator too.
Yeah, I know that doesn't work. I don't know if the stove works or not.
I don't know. I just remember putting the big one in.
If any of them don't sell, can we donate them and get a tax credit of some kind, or?
I'm not sure about that.
No, then you go intergovernmental, intergovernmental agency will pick it up for a buck. I don't think we can donate and get taxes back.
Yeah.
If we're a private industry, we could, but.
And so among the items on the list here, just for the counselors on, on Zoom, we've got miscellaneous office supplies. Two restrict, two receipt printers, receipt rolls, message taking books, uh, F350 flatbed truck. Um, a 1999 F250 truck. Miscellaneous pumps and motors. Uh, we have bricks, utility pole mount, holiday decorations, the stove we just talked about. Refrigerator we just talked about, utility trailer, um. I don't know, these tank carts, I don't know what those are.
Oxysilene?
They, yeah, they just hold tanks of gas.
Okay.
Welders or cutters.
It's like a little dolly that has hoops to hold them.
Okay. Uh, INOP samplers.
Inoperable.
Okay.
Um, those are old samplers out at the wastewater facility that just sitting on the side of the building. They've been there for four years.
Okay.
Probably even longer.
So it's time for them to go bye-bye. The street sweeper that Mark mentioned already. Miscellaneous landscape equipment, retro lead or lead, lead detector. Motorized sprayer and then the Ford Tiger, uh, side mower.
Should be leak detector.
Leak detector, no.
What's the, are the holiday decorations, the old ones or not the new ones, right?
No, 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 no. Monroe Telephone has the, the new ones, the current ones that get used. These are.
They're the trees and angels. Yeah, they're the trees and angels. They used to hang up on the posts. Not the actual ones we hang up, like put up at City Hall, the smaller ones, just those large ones.
And the bricks are from our brickyard, right?
I think so. I cannot confirm that. Officially, and I know, um, a couple of years ago, when we first started talking about this, the VFW was interested in acquiring those.
I was gonna mention that they, they're one of, they want to build a courtyard thing.
Next to the museum and they're, they're gonna carve local veterans' names into them and.
We have to have a conversation about zoning on that though. Okay, so that's, that's it, but no, that's fine. So that's everything that's on the list. Just so the Counselor Cuthbertson and Counselor Williams know what we're talking about.
So are these earmarked so that the funds go directly into the water? Our, you know, to help our water situation? Um, is that still the plan? Because we had talked about that with the. Properties and whatnot, but. I don't, I don't know if we were including all our surplus to go towards helping us with water.
Well, I think we had a conversation about the, the funds for the, the equipment sales going back into the Public Works Fund to. You know, repair existing and purchase new as necessary. I think that was the plan originally.
So in the past, the previous city administrator and I talked about, um, for example, the F350 flatbed. It is operable. I do use it. It's kind of a pain, um, mostly use it for debris and stuff throughout town, use it, dump it in the. Those debris in the burn pile. Um, an example of those funds being used for sampling would be. Putting those towards like a dump trailer, uh, especially being a one-man show at the time when we were talking about it, we were talking about being able to actually. putting those towards like a dump trailer, uh, especially being a one man show at the time when we were talking about it, we were talking about being able to actually load the tractor into it. Going to the work site, cleaning up, taking the debris, dumping them, and then putting the tractor back in it would be a lot easier than taking the tractor, parking it, walking or having city hall staff come and pick me up to get the other piece of equipment, the truck or whatever, to clean up everything needed to be cleaned up there.
That makes sense.
Mm hmm. I feel it's appropriate that whatever fund, um, those items were originally purchased for, that like the one, one little box of miscellaneous, um, general administration, I think the resolutions were this way as well, but whatever funds they're coming from or whatever funds they're purchased for, it goes back to that fund to kind of, you know, provide those monies to, you purchase new equipment like they were saying, or if we need different equipment in the office to go towards that.
Yeah, you gotta be really careful about spending money, I know a gentleman that had to go to jail because they did some of this and they spent the money on food for something that's going on, you know, it's a public entity, you went to jail.
Yeah, it would be, if, so if it goes back to Public Works, it'll be spent on equipment or on, you know, whatever that leads to, or if it's in the G A fund, it would be operating supplies like paper products, things of that nature.
Does that answer your question, counselor Kuthbertson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's going to the appropriate places and we had a plan for it and we knew for sure, so it didn't, we didn't have a problem like, um, counselor Myers just brought up.
Right.
Yep. Now, if we were gonna sell our skids, we could probably put that.
Right towards the water plant.
Well, they're gonna be surplus in a while, aren't they?
Yeah, any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think I still need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty five, resolution authorizing the sale of city surplus property using GovDeals Online Government Surplus Auction Services.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and vote. Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Linder?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Kuthbertson?
He couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, moving on. Okay, next on the agenda, water plant options, this is kind of a follow up to the meeting we had last week with Mr. Chuck Schultz. Didn't know how many of you had an opportunity to look at the, I emailed the information that he had suggested that we review. Didn't know if we wanted to have a conversation about that now, or if we need more time to read, but it sounds like we do need to make a decision sooner rather than later.
I wasn't able to open the third document, but I was able to get the first two.
Okay, was that the addendum?
I got the, the plan, the addendum to the plan, and then there was something else like.
It was probably the master plan.
Whatever it was, I, I got to the master plan where it got to read, uh.
Oh, you didn't get to it?
Chapter five.
Okay, good.
And I read the addendum.
Okay.
And I do remember.
The feasibility study then.
Yeah, I do remember, um, there was some discussion about doing the man covers, manhole covers, and I don't know how many we got done.
Well, Mark can answer that for us.
And, you know.
A certain amount, Ed.
Yeah, and the other issue we had is, I know we did smoke tests, but if we don't have documentation of it.
Yeah, we've, we've relined and resealed manholes, um, we haven't done any this year yet, I haven't approved um, a bid to get five done, I'm just waiting on them to call me back to schedule, so we'll have five more done this year. I've been keeping track of the ones we have done, I have a, a file, I can get you a number on how many we've done, all that good stuff, um, we have discussed in the past getting some, um, inserts that you put inside the manhole, put the lid back on and it kind of lets the water pool up and kind of disperse back out versus just falling down into the manhole.
Yeah.
We have not done any of those yet.
Okay, and what about pipelining, I like, you know, I know this line right out here, had the smoke test showed smoke coming up on it. And the plan was to shoot a sleeve in there and pressure it and seal it, but.
Yeah, I don't know if that's been known to my knowledge.
None of that's been known since I've been here.
Yeah, cuz that, that was talked about on my first tenure.
A while ago. Yeah.
To my knowledge, I have not seen anything that that was actually done.
So five this year and five next year, correct?
Correct, yes, uh, so with the biannual budget, there was a certain amount in there.
Right, right, right.
Accumulated to five this year.
How many manholes do we have?
That's a great question.
It was at, wanna say sixty five, sixty seven somewhere in there, and then Red Hills was added, so I think we're up to in the seventies total.
Okay.
Maybe eighties.
Yeah, cuz I know there's one in the alleyway, not too far from my house.
Yes.
So slowly but surely.
Yes, surely.
Does everybody need a little more time to review all those documents that I sent? They're not, they're not included with the packet.
Oh, we've been looking for them.
No, no, no.
It's a hundred and eighty seven pages.
I would, I didn't want to have Don. Yeah. Between the wastewater master plan, the feasibility study and the addendum to the master plan.
Do you want to see them on the yellow copies?
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
Show you the wastewater.
Yeah, some isn't the feasibility, it just.
Oh, that's interesting.
The link wasn't available.
I mean, all those are on the city website currently, so, yeah.
I guess start my work computer site, probably security issue.
Maybe, that's weird though.
They don't, they don't like anybody outside.
So I'm, I'm gathering we need a little more time, that's what I'm gathering, okay.
Although I am concerned, cuz I, you know, there's a lot of this stuff and I, I don't have all the particulars, but I do remember as a council, we discussed this before and we were told it was being done, and it's kind of obvious nothing was done.
Yeah.
So, um.
Can I say on a positive note?
Yes.
With that power outage we had the other night.
Yes.
That generator held up fantastically.
The lift station, yeah.
Lift station generator, sorry.
No, I was, I was texting with Mark that night.
Things run.
That was a two thousand and seven generator, right?
Big something, somewhere in that area.
Yeah.
So, did you get a checkbox, emergency each? Test, check. No, I still have to do annuals.
And if I back in nineteen ninety seven, that that pipe needed to be eight inch instead of six inch. And that wasn't ever discussed in front of the council, as I know of.
No. Yeah, so the, the water plant options, Chuck discussed upgrading the plant and replacing it with a new one.
Correct.
And the city has no funding for any of this, we would have to do something to get financing for it, so.
And just the lift station itself was, uh.
Yeah, I don't, what's a new lift station go for these days?
It was two point two million dollars back in two thousand and seven.
It's not, no, it's not. And our current lift station has two pumps?
Has two pumps, correct.
Yeah, and that was including all the new piping, though, too.
Oh, that's, oh, that makes more sense then.
Yeah, 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 but we'd have to, I mean, you can't put one in without the other.
Yeah.
Right, no inflation has.
Yeah, really.
Those numbers are insane.
Yeah. Cuz it was the, go ahead, go for it.
What happened to our three million, whatever, where are we going with that? Our grant?
Uh, are you talking about the funding that we got from the state?
No, that was only, that was like one point three million.
Oh, I thought, oh, but the project was originally quoted at three million, right?
I don't remember what it was.
A few years ago.
I think it was quoted a little bit more than that, actually, but.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly.
I thought we had something that was due by June, and so we were trying to still see if we could secure that funding or keep that funding.
Yeah, it's something that I know Chuck is aware of, but I don't know what the status of it is, I'll write it down and circle back.
Cuz that's, that's kind of hot on fire and it, it goes towards us trying to work on it to make sure that we try to keep those secured and not just let them run away.
Right. I can't even remember what Chuck said about that, but I will follow up with him on it. Anyway, but with the lift station, it's not just the lift station, counselor Myers kind of touched on that, there is the, the line under the river that goes to the lagoons, and there's also the lines that go on the city side, they go to the lift station that also need to be replaced.
Yes.
A lot to think about.
Too bad we just can't put them above and just incorporate that.
Well, we, we.
Pedestrian, that bridge.
I know.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I want to do that, but we lost that unfortunately. All right.
Does the one down in Springfield finally goes somewhere else?
I don't know if it's, I think it's still there, so I don't think, I don't think it's gone anywhere.
Although I think it was more expensive to move that one from there to here than.
Yes, that was gonna require, because it wouldn't, you couldn't truck it, it's too big.
You'd have to cut it in part and then you get the environmental part with the Mackenzie River.
Mm hmm, and there was talk of a helicopter.
Yep.
Yes. Would be very cool, would be very cool, but very expensive, new, so. All right, um, we'll go ahead and move on, but this topic will be returning. Okay, um, wastewater issues and possible building moratorium, I will bring it up. But, uh, this is Chuck Schultz was the one that originally brought this up last week.
Kind of, kind of on the same page as after water.
Yeah, so we've already kind of talked about that, but the concerns are real, as Mr. Schultz mentioned. And they're real enough that he is concerned we need to stop building. So it's a situation where I've involved the city attorney, and we're gonna be having a conversation about that. And if necessary, we will talk to D L C D and see what we can do. Um, I don't have a whole lot of details cuz we haven't really had the full blown conversation yet, and we haven't talked to D L C D yet, so just so you're aware, we're.
When does that conversation happen?
So I was asked today by the city attorney if I could arrange a meeting between, uh, Chuck, the city attorney, and our planner, Michael, Bill Bidwell, and I think I'd go ahead and rope Mark into that too. And then from there, we can figure out how we're going to approach, uh, D L C D, cuz they need to be notified within a certain amount of time, it's gotta be done, done a certain way, so.
To be scheduled?
Yeah, so definitely to be scheduled, so. More to come on that for sure, that's kind of risen to the top of the heap there with the attorney.
I just have a quick, quick.
Go ahead.
Certification needed on that, so that doesn't affect, there are certain projects that are like, we have, we have equipment on site, and so those have to continue to move forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and so how many houses is that project that's moving forward?
Right now, the only ones that are actually in the works, there are only, there's only one that has broken ground, has utilities and is ready to start um, laying foundation and that good stuff. One house for sure, but it is two lots, I'm not sure if he's planning on building both, but everything is being done as if both are going to go at some point soon.
Okay, so this isn't like a subdivision of twenty homes, this is just.
No, and I think the next one that would be in line, we have a gentleman that purchased a home here on Main, actually right next door, that burnt not too long ago.
Yeah.
I don't think he would need too much to actually place a new home there.
Okay.
So he might be able to.
He's talking to the planner if I recall correctly.
He is, yes, I, I will ask Chuck about that to see if, cuz he's just gonna be replacing something that was already existing.
Existing dwelling.
Correct.
It's not like the new stuff where S T C fees and all that stuff. That's already counted into the numbers of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, what about, uh, Mr. Oaks, what about his?
I was talking with the planner this afternoon, there's a lot of issues and inconsistencies with his.
Okay.
Package. So I'm not exactly sure where he's at.
Okay, all right, so at least one, possibly two.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Okay, any other questions on that? No, okay, there'll be more to come on that as well. Um, all right, we've got next on the agenda, we have a delinquent utility checklist. And Dawn, I'll have you talk to it, we've got it right here in the packet.
Yeah, I, I just, I know that the former city administrator just kind of created that in office, um, I don't believe that council's seen the process that we go through at City Hall. So I just want you guys to review it, see if you think that that is an appropriate way to move forward with the billing. Um, we do our ten day notice, um, and I have to actually send that out the same day I, you know, do our billing print offs, so I, I created that today. Um, and it's ten days after the due date of the bill that they then have to try and pay that amount, so that's kind of our first step. Um, and then after that is sent, I give them the date they need to pay that balance by, if they do not, and they don't have a pending payment, I then have to move on with a five day door hanger. Um, and then from there, if they don't pay within those five days or communicate with me on when they do plan on paying, cuz we do work with people within a, you know, a certain amount of time, um, but if there's no communication, no payment, we then do a twenty four hour notice and then we do shut off with permission, what used to be from the former C A, so I'm guessing it would be from Mayor Sheets at this point. Um, before we do turn off, and we don't turn off on Fridays ever, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, do we also not do that on Thursdays?
Shut offs?
Yes.
Um, so since I've been here, I've never actually officially had to shut anybody off, and if I did, it's been a five, ten minute period before they were either calling or knocking on the office door, um, but from my knowledge, it's just Fridays.
Okay, that makes, I think there's twenty four, no twenty four hour notices on Thursdays because that would mean, of course, you know, we, we're not gonna shut, shut me off on Friday and then I'll go home, that would just be a really not so nice move, so.
Right.
I would think any kind of holidays, like.
Right.
Yeah, we definitely wouldn't before we were.
Yeah, like Thanksgiving.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to get your guys' input on that, see if you feel that's appropriate, if you think that might need to change or shift, um, and if so, maybe any suggestions that you have.
That's a good checklist.
Funny opportunity.
Mm hmm.
For them to resolve the issue.
Exactly, and I, I will try and reach out, I mean, especially before I send out my notice, I do attempt to call people, especially if I have, I mean, if I'm in the middle of a billing cycle, but, you know, I can't guarantee I'm gonna call, but I do try to call.
It usually starts out, she sends out her notices and then it turns, the, the actual door hangers become less, and then, what was it last month, there was actually quite a bit last month compared to past, I can't remember, but.
Yeah, and we have quite a few this month for our first round as well, I'm not sure what the reasoning is, um, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're, like I said, we're, we're averaging, um, I think it's around or like the low forties for our late notice, like the first step at least. And then, of course, you know, we, from there, you know, maybe a dozen five day notices, and then by the time I get to the ti- typically, we don't get to the twenty four hour notice before people are coming in and paying or calling me and saying, hey, can I pay this day, you know, and as long as it's reasonable, I work with them.
And it's usually one or two twenty four hour notices, if any, and.
Yeah.
They're pretty consistent on who they are.
It seems like we got that down to like sixteen or seventeen accounts last year, right? Didn't we hit it down a lot?
They got whittled down and they kind of seemed to have popped up again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder what's going on.
So Dawn, are these checklists here, cuz there's, there's four of them, it looks like, I think.
There's, uh, four pages, so they're each one step in the process, the first one's a ten day notice, the second one's, and we keep these in their files as well, so we kind of know.
Okay.
Who the, the common offenders are, I guess.
Right, no, I understand, so you are, you're using these currently, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and that's another reason, especially before we look at potentially changing the bill date, I mean,
Mm hmm.
I just want to make sure we have our little ducks in a row before we go through the process and we're not gonna change, charge late fees the first few months, uh, per, you know, Schultz's uh, suggestion, but this is just, you know, to get eyes on, extra eyes on it, other than mine and the former C A's, to see if you feel it's reasonable.
Well, and going through this checklist saves you from any accusations of.
Inconsistency.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, we are, yes, we are consistent, everybody gets treated exactly the same, I, I mean, it, it doesn't matter who, I mean, you know, my kids go to school with some of these parents and it's not comfortable, but they understand, um, it's, it is what it is, I mean, if they don't pay on time, they get a letter and we go from there, yeah.
I think the checklists look good, they're comprehensive. I think the checklists look good, they're comprehensive, and as someone else said, it, there, it gives each, each uh, utility user opportunities to, to pay it off before they get dinged.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, got lots of notice.
And gives us plenty of documentation too, in case anything goes legal.
Yeah, the documentation is a big part.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. I think they look good.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, did you need anything else, just, just feedback?
Nope, just feedback is all I wanted on those, just to make sure nothing needs to be corrected or changed or adjusted before we move forward with a potential different utility billing date, I just wanna get, like I said, everything kind of ready to go, if, if we can move forward with that.
Yeah, I can just, but you know, acting city administrator like AK, A mayor.
Right? Yeah, and that's what I'm gonna have to do, I'm not, it's not, obviously not going to be the city administrator right now, um, it'll, I'll go through mayor sheets.
Or I mean, you could probably designate any of us if you need to.
Yeah, it'll probably be Council Cuthbertson.
Yeah. She's not here, right?
She's here.
Oh, I know, but not here.
She's always here. No, later she will. Okay, great, um, thank you, Dawn, for letting us take a look at these.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next up on the agenda is agreement for accepting payments on past due utility bills, we have a theme going tonight. So that's the next piece of paper here, there's a front and a back on it.
And we had actually discontinued those, uh, after we received payments up to date, there's only really one account this would probably apply to right now. Um, and I don't know if we are going to push for full payment, or if this is something that we wanted to move forward with, because it is very labor intensive to do these, I can't just, our system can't track both a payment, fee payment plus like a current payment they have owing. There's no easy way to separate those in the system, and so it the issue we ran across before was people would pay just the payment plan amount, or just the current bill amount, or maybe like somewhere in between those two amounts. But not the full payment they needed, so they have to pay the payment plan amount every month on time. Plus, their current utility bill has to be up to date. And so if not, both of those things are in place, they will still get their water turned off potentially, and then that causes, i- it seems to cause a lot of arguing, I guess, I, I don't, lack, lack of a better term, um, between the utility customers and us, because they have confusion there. I think that what mayor sheets produced is pretty self explanatory, but there's always that possibility, and like I said, it's very it tends to be labor intensive to keep track of all that.
Yeah, cuz you're manually tracking two concurrent payment plans, basically, the current one that, that do one, the overdue.
There's nothing in the system to help me do that, I, I mean, I just have to basically put on a checklist each month to make sure that there's, you know.
Yeah.
There's nothing else that I'm missing.
Do you use an Excel spreadsheet to uh, document that, the packet?
Um, that is something I've done in the past, um. But even then, so I guess I could do it with just the payment plan portion and then make sure they're current on their bill, um. But I haven't had to deal with these probably for close to a year now, there was only a, like, maybe a handful of people before that were on these payment plans.
Now we're, now we potentially have one.
Yeah, I'm trying to brainstorm how to make it a little bit easier for you, but.
It's hard when the system doesn't capture it too.
The, the problem is if I were to create, cuz I tried different methods, and I did talk to Springbrook, our, our software system. Their IT help, and there's no easy way to track one person with these two different payments in there, I could do a invoice type system like we do with our SDC fees. But then it's not on the regular utility account, and if they ask for all their utility payment records. You see what I'm saying, it'd be, it'd be very difficult for somebody to go back and track, they wouldn't know where to look necessarily.
Yeah, it sounds like tracking in an Excel spreadsheet is probably just the easiest.
Do you ever have um, people not wanting to sign this?
This is new.
Um, that particular, yeah, that particular version is new, um, we had something similar before, people didn't necessarily have any objection to signing it, because they either sign that or pay in full, that was their, that was their, were their options.
Yeah.
Or not have water.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you're charging them interest, so.
Yes.
So I mean, it's a win-win. If they have to go on a payment plan.
And I think with the payment plan, what they're, they're foregoing that late fee each month of ten dollars, um, once they sign that payment plan agreement, but only on that portion. And that's, there, that's another reason they have to stay current, because that'd just be one more thing to track and I'd have to reverse late fees and, yeah.
Well, and I know it's hard for the counselors that are online, they can't see this.
Would it, would it be useful to have a, a section toward the end that says, um, if the client or customer wishes not to sign this, they understand that they, that these are the consequences. Cuz like in reading this, I had the same question as you, Counselor Myers, I was like, well, what if they don't wanna sign it? Like, maybe it isn't, like, they need to know, here's what happens if you don't agree to a payment plan, like, you're gonna lose your water, or you're gonna have a lien on your, or whatever, you know.
And the current person that's applying to apply to, uh, actually already has their water turned off on the commercial side. Um, Mark, you know, you know who I'm speaking of, Mark, um, and they also I mean, so they really don't have any consequence if they don't pay the amount. So we're hoping to get them on a payment plan and at least get that started on being paid, they do have a utility lien on there. But we've had that not go through in the past, they elect not to pay the lien with the closing, I didn't even know that was an option, but apparently it is.
So then that's problematic, because there's really no incentive for them to pay something off if there's no cost.
They're wanting to do a business, is my understanding, in that portion of the building, so I think that they do have a reason to want to pay this. Yes, but if they, if it's a vacant building, yeah, there's absolutely no incentive whatsoever.
Is there a charge, like, is there a cost to the city by having water going up to the building but not actually into it? Like, are we, okay, so it's, it's not putting us out for it to just be turned off?
Yeah, correct, I just turned off.
At the meter.
The meter stop and. This person just doesn't get water to the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Well, I think it's a good form, Ben, I think it's, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if we needed to vote on it or not, but I've got two counselors that can't see it, so.
Previously, and this is up to you, um, previously, um, I, you know, I think input's important, um, but previously, the city administrator was the one that would create these forms, and it wasn't necessarily something that went to council in the past, whether or not that's correct, I don't know. There was more of an, an administrative type decision. On both the, the utility wait, like, late checklist, as well as like agreements for accepting payments and things of that nature.
I just feel like you guys should know what's, what's going on.
Yeah.
So. So we don't have to vote on it, I, but I I don't know how comfortable everybody is with it, so.
It's, it's a step forward, I mean, we have to have something like this, um, you know, it gives Dawn a tool to say.
Right. Covers her backside, yes.
Well, yeah, like you said, it's a tool, but you're also giving them the option of being able to make payments interest free, instead of paying full upfront.
Right.
And being shut off.
Right. It can be very difficult if you have a very large past due bill to pay it all in full, so this definitely is a very viable option. Make payments. So for Counselor Cuthbertson and Counselor Williams, would you, would you like to see this before City Hall starts using it?
I, I think I'm comfortable to go ahead and just move forward, um. I, I don't, I don't think I necessarily need to see it.
I, I same, I don't think I do either, this is normal, like, practice that should happen and, you know, in business, so I, I'm completely comfortable.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that, okay. Alright, if there are no objections, then Dawn, you can go ahead and use this.
Thank you.
You bet. So again, continuing our theme. This evening, five dot eight is past due utility bills and liens, so that's the next thing in the packet.
I believe there's only two in there to review.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah. And I just need to know how to move forward with those, I think with uh, the second one, Waltz, we've already kind of determined, uh, or given her a decision, I, is it by June sixth that she needs to respond, Mayor Sheets?
Yes, and I'm hoping by that point, she will agree to sign this document we just discussed. And make payments, that's my hope.
The other one, uh, for Keely Croson, so Mr. Wall used to own the building, um, and Keely Croson was a tenant. Is my understanding before Misty Croson was, um, I, I believe she's some sort of relative, uh, to Ms. Croson. And the utility bill unpaid, Mr. Wall was very well aware of this, he was getting the standard, you know, late letters, I tried to reach out to Keely, both via phone. I believe I've been emailed via regular mail, got her forwarding address, like, I, I reach out every way possible. I put a lien on the account in our conduit or net asset system online, and the, um. I don't believe it was a person that actually was at the title company, but part of the, I think the escrow office had um, searched to make sure there was no liens, they did see the lien on there and they did advise um, the person that was closing with them of this, but they chose to forego paying liens out of the closing fees, and so I didn't, like I said, I didn't know there's an option, but apparently you can work around it in some cases. Um, and so it still is not paid, and now it's accruing interest in late fees each month. The original final bill amount is on there, I believe it's ninety some odd dollars. Um, towards the top of the page, uh, it'll say final bill, I think it was like a final bill of like thirty or fifty dollars. Um, and that amount was the original amount, and it's up to the amount it is now, because they've got, it's gone unpaid all this time. And we can choose either work with that person and just have it be the final bill amount that was originally billed. Or if we want to charge them late fees and interest, or somewhere in between and negotiate with them. Um, or if you choose not to make Ms. Croson liable at all, that's a choice you have as well, I just need to know how to move forward on this one, so I can either close out the account. Adjust it, whatever needs to be done.
Right. So, and Dawn, you have tried, as you already mentioned, to, you know, reach out to Ms. Croson.
Uh, Keely Croson, yes.
Keely Croson, yeah.
So Misty Croson, um. And I believe it's in there, I don't wanna disclose much information on the meeting, cuz I'm not sure what all I need to be saying on here. But there is correspondence via the former CA and myself, I believe I did include that in there as to what his next steps were going to be, that did not happen. Um, not to my knowledge at least, and no letter was ever produced, nothing, yeah, nothing happened there.
Okay. So we could continue to try and do notices. The lien we were hoping would take care of it, and it didn't.
Didn't even know you could opt to not pay a lien.
I didn't either, I thought that was a, you have to pay, or you don't, you don't get the building, or the, whatever you're buying property.
Yeah, it's kinda odd.
It is odd.
And it may have been something that, uh, Ms. Croson signed stating that she was aware of that situation and didn't force the seller to pay that, I have no clue.
Maybe she absorbed it, so if she ever sells the building, she pays it, it close.
That could be, but that's not typically the way it works, like, it, it should have been paid then, because now it's accruing all these fees.
Right, so another option that we had discussed was collections. We can have a collection agency, cuz it's, at this point, this is consuming a lot of Dawn's time. And right now, we have a very, very limited staff.
Yeah.
So that was an idea that was thrown out, I don't know how we feel about it, but that's one option, we can definitely try and negotiate, if we could get, you know, most of it back, that'd be great, I mean, we have some flexibility, we don't have to collect all of the, the late fees back.
Yeah. I, I would support going to collections if it's using up a lot of Dawn's time, because Dawn's time is essentially taxpayer dollars. We're, I mean, this is like Monroe citizens.
Right.
Well, at this point, I'm, I'll be honest, I mean, I, I send a bill each month to Keely Croson, um, at the address I was given last, um. But I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not wasting my time on it anymore, it's just, I've gotten nowhere with it. Um, I've done collections before myself, and this is just one of those cases where I'm not getting any response.
Okay.
The Western Agency, I believe, is who we use for
Yeah.
collections, I haven't actually put anything into collections to them since I've been there, but um, they don't, my understanding is they don't charge us, they end up adding on to what the amount is, so they'll end up paying more essentially. If we do send it to collections.
I mean, this has been accruing for, what, a year, almost two years in August. I, I, I think there's been plenty of notice now, just my personal thought on it.
And I saw him in there this weekend.
Yeah.
I'm just sitting here thinking, you know, as we're, as you're discussing this, and the liens and no teeth with the liens with the you know, escrow and whatnot, I mean, in the future, making sure we go the easier route for you, Dawn, so there's not a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, and the problem is, like, you know, the former CA would assure me that things were being worked on or done. They weren't.
Yeah, and I.
I mean, being on the council here, in a short period, it baffles me still, seeing some of these things that have been lingering for years, it's just.
Definitely baffles me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselors Cuthbertson and Williams, what do you think about all this?
Uh, it's, it's hard to make an assessment, not having the information in front of us and not knowing the dollar amounts, but it is not, um, great that Dawn has had to fight this fight for almost two years in August, so I would support having a collections company be involved at this point.
Okay.
I concur with that.
Okay.
And I think in the future, we might look into not waiting two years.
Definitely agree with you there, yeah, so.
Totally agree, and that's why I would maybe err on the side of not and, and this is up to you as well, I, I don't know that it would be completely fair. Although it was skipped at, at closing, obviously, um, that we not charged all the late fees and interest perhaps, um, I don't know if we should just wait, get on the final bill amount, or a portion of it, like, as of the close date, um. Because at that point, when it closed and I realized we didn't get paid, um. The next step that, that's in the packet there from the CA was supposed to have happened, and it did not. Um, so that, you know, in some ways, um. Because that, that portion didn't happen, I don't know if they should be liable for all of those late fees and, and interest.
Yeah, like, is it really fully their responsibility, or is?
Yeah, and should we take some of the responsibility ourselves, like, I'm, I'm trying to catch these things as I'm going through, and I'm, I'm taking note of them and kinda slowly adding them in for council review at this point, because I, I can't just make a, you know, I can't just make a decision, I could, but it wouldn't be right.
I think another, uh, concern I have, I guess, is I think about the property that was up Commercial Street that sold, and we had originally had a lien on it, and I just wanna make sure that whatever we do, we're being consistent about how we're applying liens, I mean, I know that was a different situation, that was a.
Please, but yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Is this a Terrell property?
Yeah, and I know this is about utilities, which is a different situation, but.
And so, one of the major hurdles we have with this one, so typically, we would turn off the water, right? If, if, if something's not paid, well, the owner was aware that it was not paid. And the renter was no longer there, it was a new renter, it wouldn't have been fair to turn off that, what I was told is it wouldn't be fair to turn off the renter's uh, water, because the previous renter didn't pay. You see what I'm saying, so it, I was kind of like, my hands were tied there and I couldn't, that's my normal processes, and I was told to wait and wait and wait, and I was like, well.
Yeah.
Right.
You gotta, I guess we need to, I don't know, in the future, look to, in this, like, for example, in this situation where, yeah, the previous renter didn't pay. And you can't punish the new renter, but they're in, maybe the owner you put the responsibility kind of back on the owner, then they can go after the renter.
Yeah.
Previous renter type situation.
Exactly.
So I was going out, I'd actually, um, I had actually gotten ahold of the previous owner and let them know they were now liable, I gave them a copy of the agreement they signed and said, you know, that a lien would be placed on the property, which it was. But they worked around it. So, the lien that we had on there for the utilities, which was in our system that we use now, and all the, the real estate agents checked there before they closed. It was there when they closed on the property and they chose to. It was there when they closed on the property and they chose to. Not pay it still. So I, I didn't even know, I, I just didn't know they could do that.
Doesn't make sense.
No.
When do we know typically? Is it ninety days, a hundred and twenty days before you've sent someone to collections? I don't.
I've seen it anywhere from ninety days to a hundred and twenty. I've seen it less. Yeah, I've seen it less, but I mean. Since we're a city, I, I think we can go to ninety days maybe, but.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to go past ninety, honestly. I, I mean, the example I've seen, this is a quick example from individuals at work. Got hurt at work, got hurt at work. It was a workman's comp thing, but still they got sent to collections by the hospital. And so they're getting a bill and they're like, why am I getting a bill? Yep, that's two weeks, right? It's, I mean, it's like boom. And I see we have another one that's kind of like on the same block.
Well, we already, we already talked about the Waltz.
Yeah, I know.
But yeah.
And I was like, how come that one's not?
Their water's turned off at that location. That's why. So we actually did go through the, all the processes on that one and their account, the water is turned off there, but it is still accruing. The base fee each month because that's how our ordinance currently reads, whether or not. The owner is living there or if, if it's vacant, it doesn't matter. If there is. Um, unless they've gotten permissions through the city to disconnect. Um, the water or, or have it permanently turned off or whatever it is, they have to pay that base amount.
No, go for it.
That, that person's also asking what their options are to. Get rid of the commercial account and just have it become. A residential account, but it's two separate meters.
Yeah.
She wants to, they want to combine it into one, but it's. It's set up for business bottom.
Yeah.
Residential top and it's two separate meters for two separate systems. So it'd be a lot of.
It's physically set up that way.
Shut off the ones and couldn't she shut off the, the business one and just keep the?
It, it is shut off. It's been shut off for quite a while and it's been.
That's a lot of money there.
It, it, it's, it's been quite a while.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Well, this particular one, the city attorney is also advising us on it because it is a large amount.
Yeah, four thousand?
Almost five.
Almost five, yeah. It'll be five by the end of the summer, easy.
So how do we want to with Dawn and uh, Keely Croson? And anybody else that's. Has it paid? I mean, ninety days and then collections or? Just throwing it out there.
Oh, is that something maybe you want to add in on that other paperwork somewhere? Just to uh, advise them, a customer that, you know, hey, we're in.
Oh, on that form.
This is, we started this process of your delinquent utility bill. This is the steps we're gonna take.
Right.
You know, and add that in there, you know, this is, if this is possibility.
Right.
So.
So Counselor Ray is referring to the delinquent um.
Checklist.
Checklist, the four.
Yeah, we can add all, this is a very, I, I would say this is extremely rare circumstance or situation. This, I, I don't think that there are any other accounts right now that I can, I can recall that we've. Had to go through this particular process with, other than.
Yeah.
The one that did have the, the amount, you know, it paid with the closing, uh, but. Typically, this does not happen. We don't get to this step.
I, I think Counselor Ray is just, there, there are consequences if you don't pay.
Yeah, I, I mean, down to the end, like, we're here with this one and. If they're prized in the beginning of the situation, you get down to the end where it gets into legalities, they've been apprised at the beginning, you know, so it helps you with. When it gets to the legality end of it.
Yeah.
And they can't say, well, this was never anywhere written down or never talked about. Appraising that collections will happen after ninety days and no payment.
And maybe it can be phrased like. May instead of will.
Yeah.
You know, just.
Give you an option, yeah.
Yeah, because maybe there are some weird case by case scenarios where we figure.
Day eighty-nine, make a payment, then go another day.
Yeah, I mean, I want it to be consistent for everybody, but sometimes people just need to see the word collections and they're like, oh.
I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
So maybe on the letters that I send out, I can, towards the end, I can put this, this may go to collections if not paid within ninety days of this notice. Or how would you like that to be worded?
Sounds good.
That sounds perfect.
And I'm trying to add more work for you, but.
It'll make it easier for her in the long run.
Will make it easier.
I think it will, in the long run, I'm looking at the long.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and as you said, Monroe needs teeth.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
These two accounts are. One of them in particular.
Yeah. Okay, okay, Dawn, you've got some guidance there at least.
Thank you very much, yes.
Yeah, okay. Next up on the agenda is short term rental application. So as an FYI, uh, this application is from the same person that has the large past due utility bill. So just as a frame of reference for you. And um, also.
Question, I'm sorry, is that on their residential side or the commercial side?
The commercial side.
Now, so jumping on that.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Go ahead. We have not only had issues with the commercial account, the residential account has also been shut off and had back payment. In the past.
Okay. Nope, you're fine. You're totally fine.
Same individual.
So I also like to add on item number three on the front page of this application. Is the rented space inspected to meet occupancy standards? So I'm, I looked into this. This is an occupancy inspection that needs to be done. Benton County does do these. I was told by the applicant that Benton County had no idea what she was talking about. Regarding that inspection. So she put N A there. It still applies. It still needs to be done, so I'm just throwing that out there. If you decide you want to accept it, that's fine, but I, we need to have that inspection.
Uh, would all. All uh, short term rentals would have to be inspected, correct?
I would just say that all the, all the paperwork needs to be done before we give the okay. Or we'll be on the hook.
Right, no, I agree.
Is this the upstairs?
Uh, this is the downstairs. This is, well, actually, no, it is the upstairs. You're right. You've got the business downstairs.
Well, I think there's a residence off the back and a residence upstairs. And then there's a third. Yeah, whatever's being used as a dwelling.
Yeah, whatever this address, one sixty-six.
Way on the back.
Yeah, but I, I know people have lived in it. I don't know how up and up it was, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So Counselor Cuthbertson has suggested we get all of our. The work, the inspection report, all of that before we.
I would like to think it's important on any of them that we, we move through because we, we've been bit by that before.
I'm gonna read this as no, which means it's the rejection of this application. Because N A, she doesn't have the authorization to say N A.
So, well, and like I said, we should have all our, the documentation before we make a decision.
Yeah, line, line three, line three, line three.
Line three. The inspection.
Is it detached or not?
Well, line two is it's detached.
Yeah, but I'm reading, I'm reading line three as no because.
It's all one thing.
Upstairs.
Right, unless she's talking about the back, back thing, which is really just a storage unit.
We should probably put on our form here just. Yes or no? And make them circle it so they can't put anything different in there.
Please attach documentation.
Yeah, good call.
Yeah, it says attach. It does.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. Okay, so.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, and I have a question for you. So you said Benton County does do inspection reports. So does that mean it is required or they just do them?
So I actually asked the planner.
Okay.
And I doubled, I went and I looked myself.
Yeah.
But it's like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the planner double check my work. And he said, yeah, but Benton County does it. He actually gave me the name.
They do it, but is that the same as it's required just because it's done?
So they do it. We're requiring it. The city of Memphis requires.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, people aren't living in garages.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and if we have like fire hazard issues, I mean, we, like I said, we've been through this before and we've had.
Yeah.
Found that there were issues and it was down the road. And so we don't want to sign off on anything that's going to get us in legal trouble. Because the proper steps weren't taken.
Perhaps it's not clear.
Be that um, consistent.
Well, yeah, and, and sorry, one, one thought, perhaps it's not clear on this application. That the occupancy inspection is actually a requirement. Maybe the phrasing of it, maybe. They thought it was an optional inspection and that's why they wrote N A. Maybe we just need to be very specific about like.
Well, not only that, don't we have to have a fire? Inspection?
Right.
For, yeah.
And that's not listed on here that I could see.
And this is the new form that we just had made, right?
Yeah, this is, this is very recent, yeah.
Yeah, because didn't that other rental place, we had to reject it because there's no smoke alarms.
Yep, exactly.
No map out to get out, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so, so perhaps part of the problem is that this application form just is missing a couple of key parts that applicants don't know are required.
Right.
I think that makes perfect sense.
And I don't see a site map on here. Per uh.
Well, that'll lead into our next item as well.
It just keeps going. It's like an onion.
It is totally done. So uh, I can go ahead and I can let uh, Ms. Waltz know that. The occupancy inspection, it is a requirement and a fire inspection that is required. The fire inspection shouldn't cost anything.
Yeah.
I don't know about the occupancy inspection. I have no idea.
I would let her know that we're also updating our forms that that's more clear for future applicants.
Yep.
Because that is a, a overstep or an oversight on our end.
Okay.
So my question on that is, is so every time they say they rent it to a new person, every time are they gonna have to get an occupancy?
No.
Inspection or something.
So that we know that it's legal and done properly and that they're renting it and.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not doing it like every single time.
No.
Oh, no.
That would just be, yeah.
We, please, no.
Although I wonder if other cities require an annual.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I haven't either.
This is the first time.
This, this is actually um, an application putting a property into rental for the first time.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah. Less than thirty days.
Yeah, and I, I think um, fire inspections are somewhat periodic, but occupancy now.
Yeah, I think that's just kind of a one shot deal there.
Yeah, it's like if, if I wanted to rent my house out and, and build somewhere else.
Yeah.
I'd have to do this.
I can just imagine, I mean, I've stayed in some pretty gross Airbnb's and I can just imagine them going downhill over time and. They're really not being occupancy appropriate.
Right, right.
If it's not typical, then I don't think we should either.
Okay, all right, well, I will follow up. With Ms. Waltz on this, you'll let her know. The next item is also from the same individual with, she wants to start her business. And she has a liquor license here. And review that. So again, this is for her business.
And that's gonna be downstairs?
Correct. Now, she has also mentioned to me, so I actually had a sit down meeting with her. And she also mentioned with this business, um, she wants to do this. She's calling it the market. Um, she also wants to do events on the property as well. She mentioned a food truck, which, okay. And she also mentioned, yes, and she also mentioned uh, having music. So this signals, this raises a flag for me that we need a plan. And so I think.
She doesn't have enough property there.
Well, you've got to deal with occupancy, you've got to deal with all that.
No, she's, you know where the museum is?
Yeah.
She's the very next building, um, and it's kind of like a zero lot line between that and the bank.
Between the museum and the Christmas store.
Yep.
That building.
I was gonna say, I'm getting confused here on what.
She has a little courtyard in the back and she has had performers, musicians.
Okay, I know there's a little spot in the back, but it ain't very big at all. Between those, yeah, that was a parking garage that that person lived in at one point.
Okay, she'll, she had mentioned to me, although I don't know that this would be the wisest idea, there is like a courtyard-ish area. The building's kind of bell shaped in the front there. She, she mentioned to me possibly putting the food truck there and I was like, I. How would you get it there? You'd have to get it up on the curb and.
How do you get from the back to the front?
Right, so I didn't think that.
I don't think it.
And then how close can it be to a structure? So because of fire reasons and, you know, it's just.
Right.
All that inspection stuff that doesn't really fall under the city purview that we need. Others to look at and to decide if that's gonna work.
Is there a business license and does the business have to have a building inspection? Is?
There is a business license down, so he doesn't charge anything for it. So I mean, there is that, but beyond that, I mean. The. I know like for Corey Wall when he was setting up his business and I know now with um.
Misty.
Not Misty, but.
The other.
Yeah.
The other Croson, I can't. Thank you, thank you. I know Brady came to planning commission with her plan, so. A plan would be good.
Yeah.
Especially if we have outdoor elements to it. Because I'm worried about with music, if it gets too loud or the food truck. I mean, food trucks got its own rules around it.
Drinking alcohol on a sidewalk or near a sidewalk.
There's that. Fire department, I might have something to say about parking.
Exactly.
Mayor Sheets, uh, and counsel, I did verify, I, I located it today. I can't remember where. But I did locate, oh, it was in a planning commission meeting. So Brady Croson did submit her plan with the parking on there. So you do have to have so many spots per, for so many square feet and I don't remember what that formula looks like. But you do have to have those. And I know at the time I was told that the street parking does not apply.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, good to know.
It has to be dedicated parking for that business, is what I was told.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I understand the request here, like. She's probably thinking, if I can make some money on that site, then I can start paying down the water bill. My, I, I would say if she gets all the documentation she needs to do this legally in the right way, remember we ran into the whole thing with the Paulsons. We, we wanted to support their business, but they didn't have everything sorted out quite just yet, but they're working toward it. I feel like maybe we could wheel and deal with her, maybe if she gets everything we need, which I, I don't really have a whole lot of hope for, but.
I always have to keep in mind, we want to make sure this is safe for the public.
Yeah.
The most important thing.
Well, I guess that's what I'm, what I'm saying is if, if the fire marshal said this is safe and if.
Oh, yeah.
If, if everybody said this is safe. Maybe we can cut her what she owes the city in half or some, I don't know. I'm trying to like find a solution, but I also don't think that she's gonna get everything she needs.
Do I get it?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
We can work on it though.
Yeah. I just feel. Bad for this person, but you know, it's, yeah.
I understand.
I'm just gonna keep my feelings. You know my frustration.
I understand.
Well, you try to put your feelings aside and just think about what, what we're doing best for the public. That's the key here.
Just for the public.
Yes, sir.
I saw that, that one application had four food trucks. How much water and sewer are we gonna expect?
Oh, this is for Brady Croson?
Yeah. And, and on that, same thing with Ms. Waltz, you know, if they bring a food truck. How much more demand on our water and sewer, sewer are we talking? We're gonna have a moratorium on building.
Don't know. If the food trucks are.
They're gonna be.
And I know the, the.
Yeah.
Mexican food truck right up here, they're not plumbed in anything. They use water from the building. Um, and they dump into a grease trap that a truck comes and picks up.
Yeah.
Picks it up. So I think she's, I, I can't say for certain, but I think she's planning on doing something similar. So I think the only. Facilities being used are gonna be what are attached to the property itself.
Okay, yeah.
It's already.
Yeah, Brady Croson's, her, her app is attached.
Yeah, she's, that's really good, actually.
Yeah, so it is here as well. So this is an FYI and the staff report from planning commission as well. Okay, so. I will go back to Ms. Waltz and have another conversation and see if we can talk and negotiate.
I think, I think I can say this, but I think this is round two for this individual to try and do this.
This happened a couple of years ago.
The whole business thing did that, turned into a. Party spot. And then some things happened and this person disappeared for a while and now they're trying to build a business again.
Because they can't sell their property or they've not sold their property. Yeah, yeah, and Mayor, I, I want to emphasize, I don't think we're at a point to negotiate yet either. I think. This person needs to get all the paperwork that's required.
She needs to get her paperwork, her ducks in a row and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Nice.
Now, is she, does she run that little coffee shop too or not?
No.
No, no.
So. Yeah.
Two different.
Two different.
Yeah.
Uh, businesses.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to look at the.
Brady did own the coffee shop, but she made a deal with her child, like her kid and his wife own it.
Oh.
Run it now.
Yep. Okay. As I said, I'll follow up with this wall. Uh, next item I have on the agenda, it's the very last one on the front page here, American Legion Tri-County's post sixty-one. They have a request, they have a couple requests. The main one is, so I know VFW, who else, Mark, besides VFW? Uses, uses MCC once a month for the monthly meetings.
So the VFW and their hit or miss, sometimes they use. And then we have a, a yoga group that comes in here, I think twice a week.
Okay, so VFW, they don't pay anything for that.
No.
One day a month. What about the yoga folks?
Uh, that'll be a question for Dawn. I think they do.
They pay per day and it was a, an agreement the former C A made with them, so they only use it one hour and they pay, I believe it's fifteen dollars per hour or day, in the day they use it.
Okay.
And they pay in advance, yeah.
Okay, so um the American Legion folks, they're asking for something similar with the VFW has to be able to have their monthly meetings here, so that'd be once a month. So I wanted to bring it to the council and see what you thought there. That's request number one. Request number two is to have, they'd like to have events fundraisers here. I don't see how, an issue with that, but I think for those, probably need to pay something towards those, but that's just my being consistent.
And as long as they've got insurance coverage for those events.
Yeah, cause I. Into a situation again where we're not being consistent.
Right, we need to be.
And that's gonna get us in trouble.
Yeah.
Cameras still work, right?
Yes, they do. Um, yeah, the VFW, they use it just for the meetings and they're usually.
Right.
Quick, a half hour to an hour maybe. The.
Yeah.
What was it? The, as the nutrition program.
Oh, yeah.
Were cooking, it was a whole different thing.
Yeah.
I think the building used to belong to the Legion.
Yeah.
Originally correct, and then it was donated to the city.
Well, actually, the only records that we have, uh it didn't belong to the Legion originally. I mean, it probably, the Legion probably built it originally.
Yeah.
But it's, it passed hands several times, it looks like.
Yeah, so it, it was like a gentleman's agreement that the Legion was always.
Yeah, yeah.
Always could use it.
Right, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at. It's like, well, it was a former Legion Hall, good grief, I mean.
That was the name of it before we renamed it.
Well, I think we should consistently let any group uses it as long as they do the paperwork appropriately. I mean, that was kind of the issue we ran into at the senior group is that it felt, they felt like they were targeted when really we just needed to make it available to any community group that wants to use it.
Yeah.
I have no.
Available to everybody and they pay their share.
Yeah.
As everybody else does.
Yeah, with that is making sure that all of the commercial kitchen stuff is followed.
Hmm.
Right.
Because I imagine they're gonna try and do pancake breakfast and stuff like they do for the.
Right, yeah, they, I remember for the festival, they were, yeah, when they were doing.
That's their fundraisers, they planning on using the kitchen. We went through a few years ago when Dallas was here, doing the facilities, there's a whole smorgasbord list of things for commercial kitchens.
Right.
So I think that, my opinion, um, I think that if they're just gonna use a space for, you know, like a meeting, that, that's fine, but if they're going to create a large mess to where we're gonna have to pay more for our facilities person have to go in there and clean up or use the kitchen, then they need to be paying like everybody else. So that'd be my, my take on it from what I've seen in the past.
Well, we used to have um a cleanup fee that they had to put a deposit down.
Yeah, they, they still, and they do as.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's only for above and beyond, um if they don't do everything on the checklist and that's even really loose. So that's only basically if they do damage to the building, that's the only time they don't get that back. We, we used to have to pay for right now, you know, Ron to go in there and clean up. And if they make a big mess in the kitchen, we're not necessarily going to keep that deposit right now, not per what we've been doing at least. Um, but if somebody else is reviewing it, they may decide to do that.
I know we've had complaints in the past where different renters came in after and they always complained about cleanup or setup or something.
Right.
And then we even had people had goats on the tables.
Well, that's where you have to have a checklist and you have to have somebody doing that, but that still costs the city money.
Yeah, cause we.
Okay, so you've got that. And then the other thing to be really careful of is if we're not consistent, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble as far as who's renting what and doing what and using what.
Well, our camera should cover this room fairly easy. I mean, we got three in here, right?
Yeah, I think it covers this room completely.
Yeah, it covers the entryway plus those, and I think we, we can record what, twenty-four days on that?
It's a, it's a good amount. I, actually, I think I can pull it up right now.
I know that there were six cameras when I bought that system.
And it wouldn't take much to install a couple more. I know we should probably put a couple more out front and on the side and I.
I thought we had some pointing towards the.
We have one at the front corner of the building that catches the entrance of the playground. That's it.
Okay, but we don't have anything in the kitchen.
We do have kitchen cameras in there.
Okay, and what about that little office behind?
No.
Cause that's where we found dog food. Lots of road problems because they had opened.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, I haven't accessed it in a while. So. It sounds like we wanna go, are we okay with, we're gonna treat them as we treat anyone else? With the, the, what VFW is doing, are we okay with having the Legion folks use this one day a month?
We just need to have scheduling.
Yeah.
Taken care of, I mean, right, I mean.
How, how do you get around the fact that you're charging some people and not charging other people?
Right.
That's, that's the issue.
Right.
That it's really gonna come down.
Whether it's a service industry group or, you know, like a five oh one C, something like that. I mean, there, there are things you can look at. I'm not saying that's what we need to do.
I thought we had an agreement or I thought we had decided that five oh one C threes get it at a lower rate or.
They were a lower rate, but yeah.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
I don't remember.
So I mean, we're not charging to the F W, so it's like, so, it's like, what do we do?
Well, and there's no reason, a lot of, a lot of places like the F W and whatnot, and I'm not trying to speak for them cause I don't wanna say or know, but a lot of them are service type. And so maybe there's a, we can do something that's an in-kind thing because don't they put the flags up?
They do.
They do, the VFW does.
So because they serve our community by putting up the flags and doing things like that on the holidays, we in trade.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe that's an option, I don't know, but then you have to look at that because every single time somebody wants to use it, use it, you know, whatever we deem.
Right.
There's got it, we have to come up with a thing and then you're gonna have a whole bunch of different contracts and.
Right.
You're gonna also, if you're, if you're gonna tie, tie it to services rendered, then you're gonna have to have insurance on the services now, not just.
Or volunteer waivers.
I don't know how they.
Yeah, we do have to have that in writing as well. I know that as far as like in-kind and I don't know if this week call off everything or not, that's something the auditor will ask me for. If there's any in-kind agreements, that's the way we word it, we need to kind of selective on A, how we word it and B, we need to keep documentations. But I have that if I need it.
So that sounds almost like a can of worms. So.
And then what if other groups wanna do in-kind trades too?
And the problem that we have is that we've already had a situation with this and I don't wanna see it backfire. Because if we start doing willy-nilly again.
Yep.
You know what's coming around.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't wanna be round for.
No, I, I agree with you. All right, well, so I mean.
You didn't have fun last time?
No.
The last one time or last three?
Were you there at the fun ones?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Well, it sounds like we're charging everybody.
Where we wanted to pad up, I tell you, when you have a council meeting, when you want to put armor on.
I, I think we should charge everybody consistently.
Yeah, at least, you know, some kind of stipend.
And if it's, I mean, if it's something really as simple as just a really short meeting, maybe we adjust our fees a little bit or something like that, you know what I'm saying? Where it's not gonna be an all-day event or you don't have to set up the day before or, yeah. So, I mean, that.
Did you say set up per hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, set it up.
Break it down to hour, day or.
So that it makes it affordable.
I think right now it's what, four, four-hour increments.
The block, but there are exceptions for like the yoga group, um the former C A did make an agreement with them. Um, because it was a temporary thing and it still is, but um we might even wanna just review all of our agreements again, just make sure.
Just do that.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that there was some verbal agreement. There shouldn't have been, yeah.
And there was.
Cause here we go.
Like one hour, four hour and full day, or we could break it up even more. I know like if you ran a pontoon boat, it's half a day or a full day.
Right.
Price isn't very, very much.
Something and vote on it to make that happen so that it's.
All right, so we're, review MCC rental agreement.
Yeah.
And the rates per hour.
Again.
Again.
One more time.
A year later.
Years later. Okay.
Schedule.
Okay, so we're now on the five dot twelve, so there are two.
There's another one coming.
There's another one.
Should be, yep. I, it's not here tonight, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we, so far we have two applicants for the vacant city council um position. We'll wait for that third one then, and then we will do round of interviews. And then we will decide from there, so to be continued.
I think, no.
No, it's the back, it's the backside.
I got confused by that too.
Oh, did you?
Yep.
Yeah. I know, I was always like, I did the same thing.
So Mr. Haven, who's in the audience, and then uh Mrs. Evans, so far.
Dawn learned this front-back thing. I don't know why she does it. Yeah, but it's confusing. You just gotta be, you just gotta be careful, check her, yes, okay.
All right, all right, we're moving on finally to old business. Oh my gosh, um so uh Public Works. Mark, is there anything you'd like to share? We've talked a lot about stuff.
Yeah.
Stuff I've missed.
Um, no, so the only thing right now is in the water plant, um this data system went down a couple weeks ago. Uh, I've had Dave look at it. He was unfamiliar with the system. Council Myers looked at it a little bit. Did you get a chance to do any more research? I'm not sure.
Um, I need to get into the registry to, to re- retry that.
Okay, if not, I did find an automation group in Eugene that specializes in that outdated, it's continued system. So worst case.
And that's the, the one thing I found, you know, that Windows viewer error we're getting. I tried to find Windows viewer, there's a Windows photo viewer, but there's no Windows viewer, Windows operating system.
Right.
So it might be part of status.
Okay.
So I wouldn't know what to do with that one, cause I don't have anything on status.
Okay, so the big thing with that is I just have to do a lot more manual monitoring on things. For example, I have to drive up to the reservoir to see where we're at with our water levels. Yeah, in the morning I drive up and then in the afternoon, before I shut down, I drive up, get my levels, so I heck, I can annotate it on the paperwork.
Fifteenth, an update went in and. Crash. Security updated.
That's annoying for you.
Do you, do you wanna um? Yeah, I'm kinda busy this week, but I'll, you know.
All right.
I'll try to sneak over if you want me to.
It's a short week, I can manage. Thanks, though. Um, on another note, um, I think it was towards the end of last month, beginning of this month, we had Chuck. Our Chuck, Chuck Cross, um, had some medical issues. He's now on um
Light duty.
Limited light duty. He's been hanging out in the office with Dawn, doing a lot of stuff to help her out. I've brought over some documentation from the water plant and the wastewater facility. He's done some backlogging since about twenty, twenty of things that haven't been filed, they've just been stacked up.
That's important, so at least that's getting done.
All of our records should, I, I haven't completely gone through all of everything that had to have been backdated, but I think if the former C A was adding everything to the stack that should have been added to the stack, it's all in files now.
Okay.
Um.
Great.
So yeah, um with that, not to go too much into his personal stuff, but I think we're looking at mid to late July is his next appointment to kind of figure out where he's at medically. Um, so again, I'm out. Running mowing.
To Mark swinging it along.
So if things pop up on Facebook.
Oh, man.
Bear with me, please.
Absolutely.
Um.
We will deflect, or the mayor will.
Appreciate it.
I need to join the Facebook.
Don't join Facebook, don't.
Two or three pages the Monroe has are quite lively.
Yes.
I blocked them all, they're just horrible.
Sometimes it's fun to just read through it.
Sometimes, but it takes up too much time.
Do my best to just stay out of it. Um, other than that, Public Works, things are going pretty well. Like I said, the uh the generator did great in the power outage the other night. Um, as I've mentioned in the past, twenty twenty was the first time it had actually even had an oil change. So it's had annual maintenance since then, the uh, the tech that comes out says it's in great condition and the lack of maintenance in the past really didn't affect it, thank God.
Jeez.
Um, the pumps held up fine, they're doing just fine. Uh, our, our flow into the wet well has slowed down with the weather getting nicer. Um, so they're holding up just fine. I am due to get the tech out here to pull those and do preventative maintenance on those.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On the generator, do we have a uh monthly startup to, to make sure it's running?
Um, yes, we do, yep.
Keep the bearings off.
So every Wednesday at noon, it automatically kicks on, runs for about fifteen minutes and then shuts itself back off.
Good, thank you.
Um, but there is another check we can do, we can manually start it, we can put it under load and we can run it. And usually when the uh tech comes out and does his annual maintenance, he, he does that for a good hour, lets it run under load. And.
Yeah.
Make sure it's, it's.
I was thinking in that kind of environment, you gotta run the bearings to keep them greased, otherwise it settles down and rots out the bearings.
Right, yeah, it was um about three quarters of a tank when the power went out.
Right, we're talking about that.
We haven't even reached half a tank yet. We're very fuel efficient.
It was out for a while too.
Uh, went out at about eight fifteen, eight thirty and came on about three thirty in the morning. So it ran that whole time, did just fine.
You know, this is right after the conversation we had with Chuck Schultz, so of course naturally I'm texting Mark.
Not a problem, I was up.
Are you awake?
I was.
Made a little extra water last week, um had to run a little late Wednesday and Thursday, just to make sure we had enough for the three-day weekend. Um, I overpredicted, so we had a little extra this morning. And that was nice, so I didn't run quite as long today.
Let's get water slowed.
Good. Um. Yeah, right now I think the big focus besides admin and planning and the moratorium.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, stuff like that, um, trying to get caught up on the mowing.
Well, and then you are, um, you got a vacation coming up, so we're working with Chuck.
Yes, uh, annual Fourth of July trip, Diamond Lake, so I'm trying to get that all situated with Chuck. If, if Chuck Cross isn't ready to roll in the water plant, then I'll see if uh Chuck has some suggestions on what we can do in the water plant.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Rails.
All right, thank you, Mark. Um, Dawn, do you have anything you wanna report, county and general admission?
There's not a whole lot, uh, other than, you know, we, we've covered a lot obviously and there are a lot of things, moving parts. Uh, I am getting Chuck. Chuck Cross's help right now in the office, um going through paperwork, creating files. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, get him as many hours as possible and do things that I really just don't have time for. We do have four interviews for the administrative assistant this Thursday in person for our first round. So we'll see where that leads, um but otherwise there isn't much else to update on.
Awesome, except you're crazy busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Thank you very much, Dawn. All right, finance and personnel committee. I'll let Councily Lindbergh talk now.
Okay.
Read your update.
I have been working on the city administrator position. Um, and I've just forwarded the applications to you for our top candidates, so you all have them in your email if you want to look at their resumes. And in your packet here, you've got a color coded set of, um, phone interview questions and their responses. Um, I'm not going to use the names when I refer to them. I'll just say the green candidate or the blue candidate. So the green candidate is our strongest candidate, um, very, very great phone interview. Um. Uh, let's see, they have a master's degree in public administration, a bachelor's degree in planning public policy and management. They've been a principal consultant, uh, a housing coordinator, a housing analyst, an interim director of economic development and planning. Water resources planner for the lane council of governments. Um. So really great relevant work. It was a very positive conversation. Um, so my, my personal preference is this is the, my, my recommendation is that we bring that person in. For an interview. The next second best interviewer applicant is. The red text, which is the second one up from the bottom, so.
Okay.
Uh, initials K L. Um, that person, let me bring up their application as well. And if anybody wants to read along in their email, they can, but I'm happy to just go off here. Um. Hold on. And. Mayor, did you end up phone screening that other person?
Tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow.
Okay, schedule it for tomorrow.
So the red text person, um. Has been a financial independent contractor for quite a while. They want to get away from doing. Finance auditing, but they have a very strong background in budgeting. They have also been a city manager for a small town. Twice the size of Monroe up in Alaska, but it's been about twenty years. So they've not done it for a while, but they miss that. They miss being involved in a community. Um, so that was, their, their role included supervised supervising budgeting, financial planning and administrative functions. Oversaw public relations efforts and community development initiatives, negotiated grant contracts and coordinated with external agencies. They have a masters of business administration and a bachelor's of business administration. So that is our second strongest candidate. And then we've got two other strong candidates. Um, the blue one at the very bottom and the blue one at the top, the lighter blue. Um. The purple one was a no, in my opinion. Um. Their responses were. Not really about learning about Monroe or wanting to do Monroe any favors, but kind of just to find work. So that just didn't resonate great with me. And then the orangey burnt sienna colored text in the middle is a maybe.
Okay.
But I, I think it'd be great if we could interview at least four of these people. And I would like for the entire H R personnel, or sorry, personnel and finance committee to be on there as well as. Counselor Cutfordson, since you're the committee, you're the council chair, as well as Mark and Dawn. And the mayor, of course. So it would be a, a large hiring panel and it'd be kind of difficult to coordinate, um. Times that work for everybody, but I think it's really important that staff, council and mayor members all participate in those interviews.
The right person.
Yeah, it's a big job.
Yeah.
Um, even after it's been pared down from what it was before.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and you, both, uh, Dawn and you, Mark, have their resumes in your email now. So if you want to look at them later tonight, you can, or whenever, whenever you want. Sorry, I didn't send them earlier today.
I didn't get a chance to check my email till right before I left today.
Oh, perfect.
You don't have an answer for one of the, for the red, for one of the questions.
Uh, which question is it?
Why are you looking for work at this time?
Oh, because, um. Because they need work was their answer essentially. Yeah, yep.
Any other updates? I know we're. Dawn already talked about the administrative assistant interview that her and I are going to do on Thursday.
Yeah, so at some point, Mark, I'm sorry, this hasn't happened yet. It's just been busy, as you know, uh, we want to revise. Your P D, just look at it and see all the things that you're doing. Uh, we also want to start, we want to, we want to do an annual evaluation for you. Um. To do. Sorry. Oh, we've also talked about doing a staff council and commission, city commission, planning commission gathering later in the year. After we've got our city administrator role filled and our admin assistant role filled, I think it'd be good to have. Members of the planning commission, the city council and the staff, all of them together. I think in the past, we've just had small subsets of those groups, not everybody. And I think it'd be nice to have everyone.
It's been a while.
It's been a long time. And I don't know, John, if, uh, the planning commission has ever been invited to any of those or been involved, but I think it'd be nice to.
To add to the public work side, we had Mr. Acres has been redoing all the picnic benches and tables. The. Table at the park looks phenomenal.
Oh.
Absolutely phenomenal. If you get the chance, go over and run your hand across it.
Splinter free picnicking.
Winter free.
Excellent.
You can have a chat with him. Thank him for all of that.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So I think, I, I think we should start looking at, uh, interview times, though, for the city admin position. I, I mean, we want to start moving on that pretty quickly. We don't want to lose interest from anyone and, um. I, I won't be involved in most of the city council stuff for the month of June because of the wedding, but I am still committed to working on personnel specific. Functions. I just won't be attending other meetings.
Right.
So I want to help with all the H R and personnel stuff throughout the next month.
Okay, thank you.
We can always zoom you in, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, definitely.
So I'm thinking the first four candidates that you mentioned, we interview them.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, my priority would be your first two priorities.
I agree.
Okay, as you can fit the other two in.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. And I, I don't know if maybe it makes the most sense for us to do those interviews in the evening, like we do with. Meetings. I think it would be easier for candidates too, so they don't have to drive here in the middle of their workday because none of them live in the area.
Right, right, right.
So we don't want to interrupt that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we're not requiring them to live here anyway, are we?
No.
No, I mean, if, as long as they can report to work timely, then they can live in Corvallis, Eugene, Benita, wherever.
And would the city staff be attending those just because we do have to interact with them daily?
Yep, you and Mark would.
Okay.
Already mentioned that.
I stepped away for a few minutes. I probably, probably said that way.
It's like you guys are siblings.
I'm just kidding, Dawn.
Who was the younger sibling? Oh, gosh. Okay, so, um, probably not this week. What do we think about like next week?
Yeah.
About anybody else, but this week is turning into craziness. It's already been crazy.
Oh, you know what I realized? For the, sorry, I misunderstood. For the, why are you looking for work at this time? The red person. Oh, oh, she said that she didn't want to do audits anymore. That was her reason.
Yeah.
For, she doesn't want to do consultation or she's no longer a consultant and she wants to get back into. Working with the community. Sorry, I had that confused with the purple one, who actually did have a response and their reason was they moved from the north and they need a job.
Okay. Well, the, as far as I know, the city administration job description doesn't require audits.
No, they might have to, you know, oversee some of the auditing that.
Yeah, but I mean.
But they're not like. Yeah, totally. Okay, so you said, uh, next week or the week after, maybe for interviews?
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Yeah.
How's, how are other folks feeling about possible interviews?
Out there, feel free to. I can flex.
Yeah, okay.
My, my schedules roll.
Okay.
All over the place, so.
Okay. All right, I will just throw some days out there and. In email and.
Sounds like a plan. Okey dokey.
Oh, wait, you're not. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Even you and Myers, I'm sorry, Council Myers or not, I apologize.
No, it's all good. I was like, wait a minute, thrown in the mix somehow.
I apologize.
No, you're not good.
I, I did my tour of finance and personnel.
He did. I remember.
We thought committee, H R committee, council chair, mayor, staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was contentious. During my tenure, so.
Well, considering he was on the committee at the time. Um, okay, any other updates, counselor?
I think that's it.
Okay, cool. Um, planning commission, we've kind of touched on some of this already. So the city engineer of record, working on that with the attorney, already spoke to that. Um, I do want to work with planning commission on updating the Monroe land use development code. Some of it is quite old. Some of it goes way back and it needs to be updated. Um, I ran out of month and I wanted to schedule this with the planning commission. But I would do want to, and they've actually requested that we have a work session with the planning commission on reviewing city fees. Specifically around planning fees. So, so they've, they've requested that and I need to get that scheduled, so. Uh, beyond that, um, going, I'm moving on to six dot five. Charter spectrum franchise agreement, I mentioned that already. That's with the, actually, uh, it's moved from the attorney. To now Spectrum is reviewing it. The city has already reviewed it. I asked a bunch of questions. The attorney answered them. Um, I asked a couple more, they answered them and I was like, okay, it seems good. I mean, everything is pretty standard. So, um, it's with Spectrum now. See what they say. I'm hoping. That next council meeting will have a final draft that we can look at, so.
These are the folks that just came through and put all the cable up, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And what, what exactly is the franchise agreement? I just saw them come through.
So we have.
I didn't hear anything about any agreements or.
No, it's just an agreement for them to be able to put their, their cable and their fiber, you know, city right aways and all of that.
And, and it would be available to Monroe residents, right?
That is absolutely correct.
Yes.
Not just running through.
Yep. Yeah, because I know they, they ran, they've run through the highway, but they've offered to actually come into the city and. No, not yet.
Yeah.
No, not yet. Um, we've got on here also, uh, setup utility billing due date adjustment. Town hall meeting. That was another thing we were talking about that I was going to set up. Um, Dawn, do you want to wait a little bit on that? Or do you want to go ahead and have me schedule that?
She step away again.
So what was the question? Sorry.
No, you're fine. We're almost done.
Brush their teeth and things.
I know. That's fine. They need to brush their teeth. It's fine. Utility billing due date adjustment, we talked about that earlier.
Yeah.
Do you still want me to schedule the town hall or do you want to wait?
I guess a question I have with that. So do we want to do like a time during the day, like a lunch break? Or do we want to do one after work, like five, five thirty when we think people will be home? Um, I did put a few dates down that might work potentially.
Okay.
Um, but I don't believe, I mean, council shouldn't need to be there for the town hall. Um, I just wanted to get input as far as the time of day and then it will kind of depend from there. I know the sixteenth. Eighteenth and twentieth would work well for me, just with everything else I have going on at city hall. But, and we also want to give people sufficient notice. So I'll have to put it in the inserts. I want to give that, you know, two weeks from the date they receive it at least. Where that would be scheduled because then they have sufficient notice.
So this is June sixteenth or June eighteenth?
June sixteenth, eighteenth or twentieth are dates that I had put down, um, based on my calendar. But it could be a different day and it just depends on the time. I don't know, like I said, if we should try and do it, maybe. Like during my lunch period, like noon to one, or if we think maybe after work would be best. I, it's, it's always difficult to know if we're going to have anybody participate regardless. But we, and, and I thought maybe even, I mean, even if they don't show for the town hall, maybe. As of the first, maybe putting something in the office and they can put like what their suggested bill date or new due date would be. You know, like a little voting type thing. It might get more input that way than I would for a town hall even.
So we're going to actually survey them for their recommendation for the due date?
Correct. Yep.
I, I think you're right. I think if you. You have a. A poster where they can sign up and put their date.
Yeah, I think that we just get more input that way. I, I just, I know historically we've had town halls, even poor Chris Rivera. When he did it, he just, I mean, there's just not a lot of participation. I get that people are busy and so maybe people that come in the office and pay their bills. You know, can do that, or I can even include something in the billing they can just drop off. Then it could be something they can easily just drop a slip, you know, in the door at city hall or whatever and. Give us their vote that way. I don't know if we should require an address or a name or just their vote.
I'll be just their vote.
I think a vote's fine.
But that way we get some sort of input, you know what I mean?
A vote's fine, but however, we have people that come in and supposedly vote, but they're not actually in the city limits.
Yeah.
But they're getting it in their bill.
Well, if they're getting a bill, though, um, it would be people like coming in to pay their bill, not necessarily just anybody walking in. I would just make it very clear that it's for utility customers only within city limits. Um, and I might even just physically ask some of the people walking in, you know, if they mind telling me so that we can put it down.
Yeah, that's an idea, too.
Yeah, it just, it might be more effective, um, just based on what I've seen in the past. I, I don't know that it. Unfortunately, I don't know that a town hall, regardless of the day or time, we are going to get more than one.
I agree with you.
Participating, you know? Getting their input. I'd rather do something.
Yeah, no, and I.
A little more labor, I guess, but then we're actually getting their input.
Right. No, I like the idea of you interacting with it when, when folks come in to pay their bill. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I can even chase people down on the streets.
Okay. That'll end up on social media.
Do you think we still should have a town hall though? As well?
No, I don't think so. I think you're right. That's just, that's me personally.
What I'll do is I'll create little slips, like voting slips, um, with their billing and I'll put it on the top. Right corner of their bill so that even see the total, they're gonna have to at least see that we're requesting their participation. Um, I mean, that's about, that's about as good as I could do. I mean, if they don't look at it, then I, you know.
Right, okay. That sound good?
Yeah, and maybe even give them the option of calling in. Some of them might call in, but not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
There's that too.
Be great.
Yep. Okay. Well, there you go.
Put it on Facebook.
Oh, goodness, I don't, I don't get on Facebook, not that at least.
You're about to start. If you want your votes, you're gonna get on Facebooks.
I just died by hit mark. I'm not getting the grades back.
Oh, my. Well, I'd say put something on the city website, but we don't, we don't have a great way of doing that right now, so.
Well, eh, I could put, um.
You could put something on there.
Of what I'm gonna put in the billing, what I could do. And just say, you know, requesting, you know, utility customer input. You know, for voting on new bill date or something of that nature.
Yeah, it might spur people to contact you that don't normally come in.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I will give them different, uh, ways. Yeah, people are more like internet friendly. But, um, I will give people several ways of getting ahold of me. They can call, they can email, they can just vote on the slip. They could drop it through the door. If they can't come during the hours, they're available. Um, but what I would say is maybe we have a due date for that. I don't know if we should do it by the end of the month. Um, or what kind of timeline we're looking for on that because.
Well, when do most people, do most people have their base, their day, their bills paid by the twenty second or the twenty third?
Well, technically, they're supposed to be paid by end of day on the twenty second.
Okay.
So we could, I could put it like a due date of the twenty third, uh, votes due. Um, and they'll have them in the mailing, so they'll have well over, well over two weeks, you know, through three weeks. To vote if they want to.
Okay. Sounds good to me. How about the rest of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. Uh, just, we're down to city events here. Uh, we've got. I need to talk to Torin about if they've got an exact date for the BlackBerry Jam. I just know it's in August at this point. Um, also I've got the first responders appreciation day and the Monroe Oktoberfest, both around October fourth. Um, beyond that, um, any committee reports, anybody, any of the chairs want to share a committee report? I know finance and personnel is already covered. We've talked a lot about public works. We've talked a lot about public works. Planning commission, I've, I've pretty much chatted that up a bit. Um, library negotiations, that, that ad hoc committee will be gone by June thirtieth. Uh, parks.
We do need to have a parks meeting. I think I'm going to try to do one in June.
Okay.
I, I don't want to push it off any longer, but we've had other things that were so much of a focus that I didn't want to muddy the waters right now. But we do need to get working on it because we really need our parks master plan updated.
Yeah.
You have some questions for Parks Committee, too.
Good, perfect.
All right, um, our, our next city council work session is. June ninth, oh dear, that's going to be a fun day. Anyway. June ninth, yes, I just realized I got something going on that night. We'll figure it out. Uh, planning commission meeting, the next one is June second, that's just around the corner. Is that, is that the Tuesday? That's a great question, John. Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's Tuesday, the third. So, yeah, it is supposed to be June third. Okay. Okay, any counselor comments at this point before we wrap up for the night?
I'm gonna try to do, we're attempting to have a, um. Farmers market meeting, we're just kind of calling it a market meeting, so artists, whatever makers can do on Saturday. Morning, just to see if we're gonna make it go. morning, just to see if we're going to make it go or not. But to be honest, I've been trying to do it for several years and we just don't get a lot of response and a lot, not a lot of community coming out and with my health, the way it is and everything, I'm at the point that if we don't get enough people, I'm not going to push it this year.
Yeah, you've put a lot of effort into it.
I hate to do that. I keep trying because I want it to happen for the community, but I don't have a lot left in me, so.
Yeah, I understand.
It's time to let go of a few things. So if we don't get, if we get enough people that want to do it, we can make it go, but we will. But if not, I'm going to let that one slide for a while.
Okay. Okay, any other councillors? Nope.
Nope, just trying to get everything on my calendar.
Okay. Understood. Okay.
Uh, I, I guess I have a question, clarifying question. When we are ready to make a hire out of the, the interviews we do, like, do we, does, do we need to get an approval by vote or what, what does that process look like to make an offer for a city admin?
Recommendation to the council and we vote on it. This is where we've done in the past.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There you go. You were going to say something, sir?
Oh, I was just going to say Dawn is the best assistant on the planet. She has a calendar in Google that she keeps updated. I always know everything.
Thank you, Dawn.
To pay her a small fee.
Yeah, he introduces me as his secretary.
Oh. Mark.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
He's your minion.
Calendar. Think Mark's going to be paying a fee for the service here. All right, thank you all very much for being here tonight. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
June twenty third is our.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, I was just going to say, hope Ginny shows up because you need somebody to sign.
Yeah.
And her name's on there. Well, it's got your name on it though.
What's got my name?
Oh, some of them.
I was going to ask Dan if you didn't show up as.
Oh, they're beautiful. Oh my God.
Right, right.
No, it's okay.
Is that a Google Pixel? Is that a Google Pixel? What kind of phone is that?
Better your phone, better than your phone than something else.
Right?
Yeah.
I, I worked myself so hard in the, in the heat on Saturday, I, my heart was going a hundred and fifty-four.
I'm wondering if that's what happened to you, if that's been the issue.
Oh, I had to sit down.
I just don't know. I was curled in a fetal position before.
Yeah, it, it took me half a day through Sunday to recover.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to my doctor about it, see if it's more heat strokey stuff and then there's something I can do.
Well, Sheila had a reaction to her blood pressure medicine. Why I missed that one work session.
Yeah, I don't want it anymore. They got to get me off it because it's got my blood pressure.
It's got it too low?
Yeah.
Hers kept it low and then for some reason they say you get used to it or something happens and it reversed. Her blood pressure went like two oh nine to one seventy. What'd we miss? We missed, I wanted to get this in the council.
Oh, I saw that, but I, I thought it was already approved and part of that admitted.
No, it, I, it's over my five thousand dollar limit, so. So it's just, it's, um, this is for a connection that the city's going to be. Yes. Mark knows more about it. We got two quotes, one from H and J, the other from this outfit. We use H and J for everything and they gave us a quote of.
Lights getting pretty low.
Yeah, I may turn the, I may turn the lights on. Yeah, it's for a water line extension. Good night. Yeah, no, Mark.
Yes.
How much was the, we didn't get this done.
This one's fourteen six fifty-three.
Oh, H and J was.
This is the other piece of that one. Okay.
I thought I had a copy. I got.
Send it out by email and give a consensus?
Yeah.
That'll work.
Doing that, but I'm just thinking.
I know.
We're having, we have to expedite things.
Councillors, being Arizona, that means because, you know, with teams and stuff like that, we had to set them up.
Yeah.
Um, I thought I saw that paperwork in here and I just thought it was part of the consent agenda, so I figured it was approved. Sorry.
Yeah. That's resolution, that's the first resolution. Yep.
So I think we established option B.
I think you said B was cheap, that's H and J, right?
Twelve, twelve thousand three hundred seventeen.
And a couple thousand dollars less, aren't they?
Yeah. And that, the other one, the McKenzie?
Yeah.
Doesn't even include the TAP. They don't do tapping. They usually, most cities do their own taps. They want to do their own taps, so they don't do it. H and J, they'll do the tap where they hire a contractor to come in and do the tap. So the TAP could be another couple thousand dollars.
It's time for you to make an executive decision there, Dan, and then ask for forgiveness later. I'm pretty sure they, we could all call them back in and say, but you'll have to slam the gavel real good.
You got councillor Williams, I'm worried about, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't do that. Oops, sorry.
That's okay, my foot, Bigfoot's out in the way. Yeah, it's like volunteering up.